I have too much.
Yeah. It's, it's like the four, five, six, seven, eight. Countries. But, uh, they're a brand new house. They're, they're lot sized. It's eight, seven hundred and fifty square feet. That's the lot size. And that's the house. Only eight hundred, so there's not much left. That clock is slow up there, George.
I know. We don't have a recording secretary.
Oh.
No.
No volunteers?
Trust me. No, Angie, I've seen how you take meetings.
Yeah.
You're the last one I would pick.
A week ago, I can still call Pledge of Allegiance and all that.
Okay. All right.
I mean, yeah, you're all call.
Oh, here she is.
Thank you.
I had to deliver anything I couldn't avoid.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at six thirty-one. I'll stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Hold on one second. George Cullis?
Here?
Patrick Feeney?
Here.
Mark Freeman?
Here.
Karen Winchester?
Here.
Steve Ruth?
Here.
Okay, and the consent agenda. I want to add one thing under presentations. Um, I want to add Sue Julian to that list. Are there any other additions or deletions?
Would make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
We have a motion by Clerk Winchester, support by Treasurer Freeman, to approve the consent agenda as amended. Roll call, please.
Patrick Feeney?
Yes.
Karen Winchester?
Yes.
George Cullis?
Yes.
Mark Freeman?
Yes.
Steve Ruth?
Yes.
Motion carries, five zero. Okay. Um, we will go down to public hearings, which we don't have, then we will move on to presentations. I don't see Ron Campbell here. So Sue, we'll go ahead and start with you.
Okay. I'm here, uh, presenting on behalf of Headwaters Trails because, you know, we are...
Sue, I need you to start with your name and address.
Sorry. Sue Julian, um, three five oh five West Radley Lake Road in Holly. I'm representing Headwaters Trails.
Are you guys hearing the microphone?
Yes.
Is it? Okay.
Are you hearing it? That's important. Okay, all right. Um, I'm here because, um, I think you know that the Headwaters Trails group is not giving up on the idea of creating a landing at Fish Lake Road. And with your help, uh, we applied to Michigan Natural Resources Trust Commission and did not succeed in that, and the Recreation Passport Program and did not succeed in that. We, we collectively were beaten out by people who offered a hundred percent match and, uh, substantial, uh, community follow-up services. And we just weren't able to make it. We have another opportunity right now. Uh, and in fact, Headwaters Trails has already sent an application to the Ralph Wilson Junior Fund, which is being administered by the Southeast Michigan, I mean, the Community Foundation for Southeast Michigan. And this fund is, um, sponsored by the, for, the owner of Buffalo Bills, and it's available only to people in Semcog and Northern New York State, where Buffalo Bills are from. And it is specific for recrea- increasing recreational opportunity for the community. So I really think that this fits the bill. So we submitted a grant and used, uh, the local conservancy, North Oakland Headwaters Land Conservancy, as the fiduciary, because we felt it would strengthen the application to have someone who has yearly audits, annual budgets, annual reports, all the kind of thing that you expect from a larger organization, but you don't get from Headwaters Trails, which is a group of volunteers. However, I don't want to put down the work of volunteers, because in the application, we came up with, um, among ourselves, thirty-seven thousand dollars in match in our accounts, and ninety-six thousand five hundred in anticipated income, including the fifty thousand that we were, we are asking for from, uh, the Ralph Wilson Fund. But the reason I'm here today is because in the past, uh, the township has committed funds to our other applications, and I would last, ask you, uh, in a future meeting, to offer a resolution, uh, recommitting, uh, seventeen thousand dollars to this application, uh, pending the acceptance of the grant. So, uh, not writing any checks until the grant is received, but a resolution pending, uh, counts, uh, for the grant. And, um, we have, um, I think I'll hand out. We have, uh, one of our members has committed to a, um, a one-to-one match from anyone in the public, and so I'm passing around letters that we've just sent out. I have some for the audience. They're also invited to contribute. And, uh, two other of the members wrote checks for five thousand dollars. Another is going to write a check for ten thousand dollars. This is pretty hefty money. But it shows you the commitment of this group that we really want to see, uh, this happen. So, um, I have, uh, various pieces of evidence, which you might want in your next board packet, including, um, the memorandum of understanding between Headwaters Trails and North Oakland Headwaters, who's, what's happening, what's the fiduciary doing? Because a check would be written to Headwaters Trails, and Headwaters Trails would then write a check to NOHLC, who would deposit it in a separate bank account and, uh, ensure that the funds were, uh, spent properly. We also can tell you that we have, um, the engineering done for this, and, uh, we're asking, uh, the current engineer, Flyson Vandenberg, who succeeded Gould, who started on this many years ago, um, to go back and see if it is possible to, uh, get this built for, uh, less than we thought with the passport grant, and they think that that may be possible. So I'm open to any questions that you might have regarding this. I just want to tell you that the commitment on behalf of this volunteer group is pretty darn strong.
What's the basic, um, how much money is it going to be, is it going to cost to make the landing, and what's included in that?
Hundred and thirty-three thousand, I think it was five hundred, yeah. And that means, um, that there will be an, an approved entrance and exit approved by the road commission. And we previously had permits for that. We have to reapply because they only exist for three years. The engineering firm is doing that as we speak. Well, probably not tonight, but they are doing it now. And, uh, so there will be parking for eight to ten cars. There'll be a place, uh, for a livery, uh, truck and vehicle to unload, separate from the parking, because that seems to be one of the economic benefits of having, uh, a landing at this place. And, um, then there'll be an ADA accessible ramp to, uh, boardwalk to the river, and then actual ramp into the river. So, uh, it, it will be ADA accessible as specified in the, um, application to the National Park Service to become a national paddling trail. We've talked about that before. The application has been there for one and three-quarter years, sitting on somebody's desk. We figure it eventually will be approved, along with the Flint River, which is also asking for the same designation. But you ma- you probably know that, um, Holly Township, as part of the Shioasi River Trail Coalition, has designated this site as important to completing the eighty-eight mile trail, starting in the village of Holly and going to Fenton. The, the problem, two, at least two problems that we're trying to conquer with this, is that there isn't close parking. There is not, when you go all the way from Holly to Fenton, it's three and a half hours, unless you're paddling like crazy. And not everybody wants to take that length of a trip. And, um, it's also not ADA accessible at the present time, but this would make that accessible. There's one, um, category above ADA, and that's called universal access. That means it has to fit, uh, all the possibilities for people with every kind of disability. We don't think we can meet that criterion. And I say that as a, as an advocate for people who are disabled. My sister-in-law is legally blind. But can we make it for anybody on any kind of crutches, in any kind of wheelchair, any other kind of disability? We can cover as much as possible, and I think the township can be proud of that.
I would ask if you could get a copy of the grant application for the township?
Certainly. Yep. It had to be done online and done quicker than I thought. So I did it. Any other questions? So we, we expect, uh, the application was due at the beginning of January, January thirteenth, actually, and, uh, we expect to hear at the end of April, beginning of May. So any time between now and then would be appropriate to, uh, pass a resolution of support.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I see Ron Campbell has joined us. You're up, sir. Okay.
Thank you.
Well, he's setting up the presentation. Do we want to do some reports?
Sure.
All right, we'll start with Mr. Ruth, trustee.
Nothing for me.
Mr. Feeney?
Okay, well, let's see. Our last planning commission, we had our, uh, a training session going on about the workings of our, uh, planning commission. It was led by, uh, John Jackson, our township planner. It was very informa- informative. A lot of good questions were asked. Got a better sense of how, I think some of the members got a better sense of how the, uh, planning commission should operate, I guess, you know, in some degree, and that, and some questions that, you know, had been lingering were answered. Uh, we also met our new, uh, planner for our, for Holly Township. And George, could you help me with the name on?
Julie Conneke.
Conneke, okay, because I have a tendency to butcher names at times, so I didn't want to do that. Seems like a very nice person, and I'm looking forward to working with her on that. And I thought it was a very productive night. Uh, we also held our elections, and our results were unanimous. Uh, some, uh, Tony Engelberg was elected, uh, chair. Uh, Stacy Stuckley was vice chair, and Ray Curtin was our, elected our secretary. And to serve, uh, this year, and as our officers. Um, I was asked by Tony Engelberg to read tonight a statement that he had. Don't mind, I will go ahead and do that. Uh, give me a moment here, because I'm doing the little technical thing here, so I don't, uh... Bear with me, little froggy girl tonight. "Good evening. After a conversation this evening with Supervisor George Cullis, I decided it was time for me to resign from the Holly Township planning. I will outline my reasons below, but would first like to highlight some of the things I am proud of during my, both as a regular member and also as the chairman for the last three-plus years. Shannon distributing, groundbreaking, getting the Michigan Renaissance Festival to compliance ordinance for things like wind solar, woodlands, signs, wellhead protection, cell towers, chickens, more as well as participating in the master plan process four years ago. These are all things that I have the privilege of being part of during my seven years on the board. My reasons for resigning sadly have nothing to do with the actual function of the Township Planning Commission and everything to do with factors within the village of Holly and what the displeasure some of our more narrow-minded citizens."
Sorry?
No problem. "It is no secret I consider the village of Holly, including the DDA Board, to be infested with corruption. As members of the Township Planning Commission, on more than one occasion, I have been cautioned to curb my directness in expressing my concerns with these issues. As for a majority of the time, I have in fact, for every issue I have spoken out about, there's been nine I would refrain from because I knew the backlash it would cause. When I signed up this, for this, I did not do it for, for the power, but because I wanted to do the right thing for the citizens of Holly Township. In the opinion of Supervisor Cullis, my opinions about the village and the direction this, that I express them are hurting the citizens of Holly Township. This is not why I am serving, but I know myself well enough to know I cannot sit silent in the face of bigotry, corruption, or the mindset that shields bad people simply because they happen to be a veteran. A person for excuse, a person for bad behavior. Unfortunately, more than once, a veteran's status has been thrown up to deflect criticism. And I cannot be a team player if that means blindly and silently being still while elected and appointed officials in the village I live in act in a way that seeks to benefit themselves, their families, or the chosen royalty in the town at the expense of the rest of the citizens. In this situation, I will speak out and will not pay attention to the tone of my comments. I understand that Supervisor Cullis believes that my opinions will make it hard for the village and township to work together. I'm not someone whose opinions cannot only be controlled, nor can I walk on eggshells when expressing them. But it seems these are opinions weigh more on the township than the good I have done at the board. In both the village and the township, it's easier to label people like me malcontents for speaking out rather than looking at the mirror and addressing the issues that are causing the complain- complaining. That is how corruption keeps its hold. The unfortunate thing is, these issues have nothing to do with the Holly Township. And my leaving this board does nothing to fix the corruption within the village. It only gives the village justification to continue to operate as it is. So while I know I legally cannot be made to resign, and I'd be entitled to a hearing if my resignation was formally asked for, I'm choosing to walk away with the clear conscience and proud of my record because I know I have served the interests of the township, including the interests of those who do not like me. With honor or the best of my ability..." With honor and the best of my ability, sorry. "I would like to, I look forward to doing things elsewhere that I'm good at and where, where me and who I am, without censoring or influences it and appreciate it and respect it and value. I would like to thank my fellow planning commissioners, past and present, for their service together. Please go forward and do the right things for the citizens of Holly. Remember, you are those there to protect the community and see it grow responsibly. Do not make Holly Township easy to do business in at the expense of sacrificing the quality we all enjoy here. Instead, make sure we make doing things the right way and the proper way. While we wish the people left on their own ideals will do the right thing, we know that's not the case. And strict regulations are important. Look after the citizens first. They will be they, business come and go, but the citizens will always remain. They are the ones that who have, have and will continue to demonstrate loyalty to the township through good times and bad. Do not be blinded by outside influences. Make honest and thoughtful decisions, and remember, it's not, not about being right, it's about doing right. I would like to thank my supporters, and do not be mad about this, be happy for me. A gray stretches off my shoulder. I no longer have to make a choice between my integrity and silence in the name of politics. My head is held high, and I will sleep better than I have in a while. And I would like to thank Supervisor Cullis for appointing me in dealing with these ghosts who came into his office, complained about me rather than looking at themselves in the mirror. I held no ill will towards Mr. Cullis and will be endorsing him in the next election. Sincerely, Tony Engelberg." I just had the, a brief comment on it. You know, when considering the resignation on this, it's, you know, I think, no surprise that anybody, that Tony is very opinionated. But when you, when we consider this, you might want to keep in mind the perception that we're basically, that someone's being, did not like what he said about an issue that did not concern the township, did not concern the planning commission. And that seems to be what he's saying his downfall was here. So I would be very hesitant about accepting resignation, because that puts a very chilling effect on anybody wanting to serve on any kind of board if they think that their opinions are going to be muted because of that. I can honestly say, in my four years of serving on the board, Tony never used, hit the board, or never said at a board meeting, anything that would have been inflammatory about any issue dealing with the village. All I knew full well what Tony felt about issues of the village, trust me. And a lot of times I agreed, and a lot of times I disagreed with them. But I think you should take a long and hard look when considering this, because I think in the long run, it could be very detrimental, because the perception is going to be, you can't speak your mind because you are serving on a board. And the only other thing I had on my report was, is I did have a couple of, uh, our planning commission members were wondering, Karen, where the, uh, agrotourism issue was. We understood there were some concerns with the attorney head with it. We didn't know if that had been resolved yet or not.
No, it's not. It's still with her.
Okay, all right. And that's pretty much all I had.
It's, it's with her and the new planner.
Right.
Julie Conneke.
I have a couple of questions, your comments.
Sure.
Uh, you said that you voted, he was elected chair, though, at the last PC meeting?
Mm-hmm. This all took place after...
But he would have known that he was going to do that at that time.
Uh, I, George, George would have, on the timeline on that, Steve, I wouldn't know. But as far as I knew at that time, he thought he was going to be chair, so...
Okay.
And I don't believe he was, had been asked at that point.
You, the word corruption in that was quite often used. And if he's got some proof, then he ought to be bringing it forward, not just, it's just opinion right now.
Right. Well, like I said, I don't always agree with Tony. He asked me to read that in, and like I said, you know, that's something, but, you know, that's some, that's something to weigh when you're, you know, considering it, you know, something like that.
That's all.
Okay. Um, Mr. Campbell, you're ready?
Uh, we just need to get the projector on. You have to push the button on the other button.
Oh. Mark, are you tired? That hurt. Oh.
I got it.
Richard, not a timer.
It's pennies.
The pen is mightier than the sword.
It's blinking green, looks good.
Okay, now you're ready? Oh, we gotta wait for it to warm up?
It's blinking, it's not on. I mean, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, you can see it.
While we're waiting for that, Mark, did you have your report?
Yes. Um, hopefully next month, on that agenda, uh, have a contract with, uh, Oakland County to be reviewed, um, and it will, uh, basically give us the op, the, uh, ability to take credit cards over the counter. That's a service that we haven't, uh, provided up to this point. It's all been cash or a check. Obviously, I think everyone is aware that, uh, more and more, the public is using either debit card or credit card, so I've been working on that. I, I, I was working on it a year ago, but then my deputy treasurer resigned, so that kind of put it on the back burner. But I'm hoping that it's going to be on the agenda next month.
You can pay taxes with that?
Yeah.
Are you going to charge anything for use?
Whatever the fee is, it gets passed on to the cardholder. They will also be able to pay for their building permits with, over the counter.
Gotcha.
We won't have online services, but we're going to do this in incremental steps. First step is to provide that service over the counter.
Okay. Is that complete your report?
That is.
Clerk Winchester?
Nothing for me.
Nothing for you. Are we ready? It looks like we're ready. The lights are right there.
No matter which one.
Just push.
There you go.
Well, thank you for enjoying the night. Uh, this is, um, a compilation of about two years of, uh, developing it. I'm from Oakland County, just to give you an idea. Preservation Architect, uh, in South Preservation in Bean Street, uh, working with the planning department.
Excuse me. Because we're on live, maybe you should grab that mic. It's on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If you get it up there close, you'll hear it. Introduce yourself again. Uh, Ron Campbell from Oakland County Planning and Economic Development. There you go. I'm going to swallow. Um, so we started this, uh, late in the fall of, uh, twenty seventeen. And what I'm going to do tonight is give you, I've, I've got reports, uh, for everyone, but I'm just going to hit the highlights in kind of the format of the, uh, report itself. Uh, the index, we'll go through the introduction, history and heritage of the site, uh, public involvement. The surveys are included in the appendix. Presentation format, this is quite a large site, uh, so we had to break it down in increments, and you'll see how that's formatted. And then we talk about the design character in each of these areas that we'll be talking about. And then the preservation sustainability, and then the appendix. So, uh, that's all included in the report. I won't cover it all tonight. Uh, we want to make this brief, give you an overview. Make sure I'm getting the right buttons here. So the, the format of the presentation and of the, uh, report, uh, takes this, uh, strip of land over, uh, twenty-five hundred, uh, linear feet along North Holly Road, and it breaks it into five areas. Those areas are been, uh, enlarged, uh, with the plan and some, uh, information about that particular area. It, we talked about design character. We want to begin not within the park itself, but on the extreme, uh, roadside edge of it, if you will. What we're suggesting here is, uh, mass planting of sugar maples, deciduous trees, that in time will become a, a tree-lined portion of this road, giving a, a feeling of special emphasis, uh, to what's happening beyond the trees. So we'll begin at the south and work our way north. Uh, the first, uh, area that we're talking about is what we call the south entry and the advent field, uh, highlighted within that box area. And after each, um, introduction of the area that we're talking about, we do, uh, we provide maps that shows what the development would be with a hundred-year flood, as well as the soils grouping. We feel both of these are very helpful and instrumental in the, uh, development of this land. In terms of educational purposes, uh, you can see, uh, there with the, uh, flood plain, the little south house, we call it, the Greek revival on the right-hand side, lower, uh, right-hand side, where they built, not having all this information available, but they built in the areas they knew were not going to flood. They also built in sound soil. So all of this can be educational topics. Ron? Yes? I'm, I'm getting word that you need to move that mic. We're live streamed. Oh, okay. Does this help? Okay. Yep, you can. I will try. Aim that thing at, oh. So we take a large, yes. So we take a larger picture of this area as the land is right now. And what we're proposing here, of course, would be the... Hold it. Thank you. Thank you. So approaching from the south, we'd we'd have signage. But we also looked at the future and what would happen, say, for example, if the township could acquire a portion of the land further east, that little segment that's just west of Schwartz Creek, and how that could be developed into a roadway leading to the event park as well as overflow parking in the event field. Moving further north, we have the South Meeting House, a gazebo and pollinating gardens. By the way, these are all items that have been suggested in the public survey that was conducted. That survey is in the appendix at the end of the report. So the South Meeting House, and we've highlighted them here, the house, of course, is existing. What we'd like to do is we're suggesting that the well and the windmill be reconstructed on its same location. We have a couple of outbuildings that have been restored, reconstructed. And what we're proposing, there's a natural feature right here with the way the land falls, and it would contain a gazebo, which would host a variety of events. So looking at it in terms of each of those elements, we have the existing south house on the left, almost identical house, but reversed that we helped move to Bauer Farm in Bloomfield Hills. It now serves as a reception center and main gathering point when school school groups visit. The natural flow of the land allows for some type of seating arrangement where you could bring lawn chairs, set on the lawn there, or have a built-in seating as it cascades down the hillside. And of course, the pollinating gardens and the gazebo itself. Pollinating gardens can be both for trail purposes as well as educational purposes. Taking the kind of the heart of the development, this would what we term the Event Barn, North Meeting House, and Municipal Building. Two of these are existing, the Event Barn and the North House. The Municipal Building would be a long-term future possibility that, well, I'll explain in just a minute. Trying to get this to advance. Not getting it to advance. I don't know why. Uh, the Event Barn, of course, has been under restoration. Again, the way the site is positioned around this barn gives us opportunity. One, if you can think and picture yourself on the east side of this barn, you're really looking at a two-story facility. That in itself could become a stage with a seating element around the outside looking west. But the barn is large enough itself to be event space, exhibit space, as well as perhaps even stage productions. The North House, we see that becoming more of a support facility, exhibit space. You can see there in the very center slide, this is the house that was in Atlanta, Georgia. It's been converted to a gallery, which they rent space out in very raw condition, which the the current house is far above this. It could also be a house maybe for the bride's room or groom's room, depending on the events that are going. Again, it would be a la carte menu that could provide income for the park itself. The Municipal Building is, like I say, is a long-range idea, taking some of the forms that are on the current Township Hall, as well as the forms that are familiar with the farm. The center lower picture is the Van Huesen Farm at Rochester Hills. This was a dairy barn that's been converted to a museum. And the idea is that the center gateway could be the leading from the parking lot and would be support facilities, tickets, restrooms, even a community room in this facility, but leading to the Event Barn itself. Moving again further north, we'd have the community gardens, orchard and pasture. The community gardens occupy a little smaller area. During interviews with this group, they indicated that they're probably taking more land than what they could use right now. But there is flexibility in this area. As you can see, there's a large parking lot on the right-hand side. It'd be about a hundred and eight cars. This would serve the Event Barn and activities that are going on further south. But it could also serve with the potential community gardens here. And then, of course, the pasture lands further north and orchards. Don't know why it's not.
It's a mind of its own.
One of the ideas that we had at the community gardens is another barn that would serve just the community gardens. This could be used for storage, but is perhaps even for exchange of seeds and things like that during season. And the barn we had in mind is now owned by Oakland County Parks and Recreation. It's the Ernst Barn. It's one of the oldest barns in Oakland County, predating the Civil War.
And that was a dairy barn as well?
Yes. He also uses it as part of his agricultural, the greenhouses there. The orchards, they kind of speak for themselves. There could be some crop. It wouldn't be a large orchard, income producing, but it could produce some apples and activities. And then the pastures themselves, again, with this tree-lined road, the fences that would cord it off. And these pastures would is seen as being used by 4-Hers, and we'll get into that next. And this would be the very northern end of the complex would be the 4-H barn and some of the retail activities, Sugar House and Retail Outlet. Again, these are all activities suggested by the public survey. These would all be new structures, the 4-H barn. This is conceived, working, in fact, one of the largest respondents was 4-Hers participating in the survey. And the idea here was the barn would be more for cattle raising. This would be a project on a yearly basis, probably rent the stalls. Perhaps the person, the child that's raising the cattle doesn't have space or the ability to do it at their own place. So this would give them the facilities to do it. Immediately to the east, you can see that would be smaller livestock and would housed chicken houses, things like that. The orchard immediately to the south and then pasture lands out closest to the road for the idea and the advertising. Heading further north in this retail outlet, which a lot of the public suggested that there be some type of retail outlet that would sell the goods that are produced at the farm, such as the Sugar House, a little cabin that we would in-season perhaps produce maple syrup. And then that very northern section is envisioned to be planted heavily with sugar maples. And these are all long-term ideas, but the 4-H barn, which would be new, the types of activities that would go on there. Harvesting maple syrup and syrup and the retail outlet. And of course, the trails itself that could make its way through the deciduous woods. So that's the ideas that have been talked about, and we kind of put it together using the reports, the survey information, the soils, the floodplains, things of this nature, as well as the existing buildings. Historic site goes back, dates the early days of Oakland County history, that of the township. And what was interesting is one of the questions of the survey depicted which periods of history would you like to see preserved and presented here? And it was evenly divided among the different periods, not only of township history, but that of American history. So it really lends itself to some good educational opportunities, as well as an actual working farm and events that could be hosted here for all the township. With that, I open up to any questions. I do have the reports that provide for you.
How much of who's gonna run it? I think it's great. It looks good. Who's gonna manage and do all this?
Well, you know, when we started this project and I came into office, the question was, what was the direction for the farmstead? What were we doing? The township's owned this property for years. And the answer was, we didn't have any money.
Yeah.
And I said at that time that without a plan, we would never have money. Now, this is a master plan. This doesn't mean it's gonna be implemented in the next three years.
Sure.
Other farms in the county, other properties like this have been in twenty-five and forty years in the making.
Sure.
To get there, their educational opportunities. We've, in in the process of getting us to this point, we have taken, I think, three different bus tours. Mark, I think you were on two of them.
Mm-hmm.
That that we went and we've looked at other farms and we've seen the operation. And all of these farms are 4-H connected. They work with Michigan State. They're all their programming is full. And the one farm told us, I think, that when the programming opened in April, if you weren't on in the first twenty-some seconds, you were out. It filled up that fast. So so this is a master plan. This doesn't mean it's gonna be done tomorrow.
Sure.
While we've been working on that, we did have a donor step forward. We do have a hundred thousand dollars that was donated to us to get us started. That's a good thing. I wanted to touch base on three things as we went through there. You spoke of the south end of the property and the acquisition of a piece of property that would allow that entryway. We have been in contact with the owner of that property, and he is open to looking at that. That's that's one thing that we knew when we got to this point. He wanted to sit down and look. You talked about pollinators on the property. We already have some pollinator areas along the Schwartz Creek at the back of it that are that are fairly well-preserved and quite active. And then the other thing I wanted to mention, you were talking about the historical significance of the farmstead. Mary Blanchard and Harvey Sorensen and I went and met with two of the sisters that are still alive, that grew up on this farm. And they were showing us photo albums. And in the photo albums, they were showing pictures of them and their brother and sister at the 4-H fair. So they were participants in that. And if you remember, Mary, I still say my favorite picture is the picture of the mother holding the tail of a cow that was trying to get away while she was waiting for the kids to come and get it. And the sister said, she'd kill us for showing that picture, but she's got her house, her apron on it, and she's holding the tail of a cow. It was a great photo. So there there's a lot of history and stuff like that available to this. So this is yet another step toward getting us to that process. And I thank you for the work that you've done.
Very nice.
Getting us here. Are there any other questions from the board? Pat?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So how is the, what's the plan to begin?
Well, that's where we have to go next.
Okay.
Now that we get this, we'll we'll be coming back and we'll talk about.
Okay.
Some more of that. So. We'll go back to reports for a moment because we got everybody's report with the supervisor's report.
And the clerk.
I'm sorry?
And the clerk.
Oh, I have to do it.
No, she didn't have it.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So the engineering process is moving forward on North Holly Road. They, we met with the National Cemetery and coordinated some of the detours and so forth with the National Cemetery because the National Cemetery is doing funerals every fifteen minutes from nine o'clock in the morning until three o'clock in the afternoon. So they're a very busy place, and that was a big concern on how we move traffic there. This process, this project is going to, they anticipate letting it in April with the construction starting in June, right after school is out. It will go, the project starts three hundred feet north of Grange Hall intersection and goes all the way to the county line. There are four points of interest where there will actually, the road will be closed for a period of time to through traffic. Obviously, all the locals will be able to get in either from the north side or the south side. They are going to be holding a public open house on February twenty-fifth from four until seven o'clock at the middle school. And they will have all the maps there. The county people will be there. The public will be getting mailings, and they will, the county's handling all of that. And you will be able to stop in and see any questions you've asked. They will be there to answer them for you. They will, they will be having four points of interest. One is just north of the middle school that has been flooded for the last week. That area will get receive new drainage and will be raised eighteen to twenty-four inches. The next area will be north of Mitchell Road, and that will be raised as well. And then Belford Road, that intersection will be closed for six to eight weeks while they take that road down on the south side of that intersection another two feet. The wall will be pushed back and opening up the sightlines coming out of the National Cemetery as well. And then the fourth area will be at the bottom of that hill by Ferguson Spring, north of Evans Road. And so all four of those projects, the other areas, they're also doing a new thing. And you'll have to ask when you're at the open house, because I can't remember what they called it. But the two curves by the farmstead are gonna be getting a new application, and those curves are going to be getting a non-skid application. So it should hold you the road because on those curves, they don't have the ability to bank them. So they've got a new mesh. They explained it. They had a name for it, and I didn't retain it, unfortunately. But you'll be able to talk about that at that open house as well. So that was the the one thing that I wanted to report there. We got some more information today on the census moving forward. Watch the website. I think there's gonna be some jobs available coming forward as that develops for the census. And I think that completes my report.
George, one are we going to see about the company, about the HR issue?
They were supposed to be on the agenda this month. They had to, there's, they had to set up a meeting with the clerk to go over what they needed to go over. So it's my understanding they're gonna be here in March?
No, in February.
I'm sorry, February. Yeah, in February. So that's the story.
And has there been movement on the, I'm gonna see Mr. Lewis is here. Has there been movement on the?
We've been talking in in that direction.
Okay.
It's it's a bit, as as Mr. Lewis knows, it's a bit of a complicated thing that we're up against. But we're working on that as well.
All right.
Okay, let us move to public comment on agenda items only. Members of the public can address the board on agenda items only, once recognized by the supervisor. Comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes. The board may extend this time by a majority vote. Prior to addressing the board, members of the public shall state their name and address for the record. A second public comment is available after new business for all other comments. Thank you for your cooperation. Do I have people interested in public comment? None appearing? None appearing?
We will.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I didn't see your hand. Was that a last-minute hand or did I just not see it?
Sue Jul, pardon me. Sue Julian, I'm speaking as a former school board member and the, the proposed raising of North Holly Road, have you been in contact with the school? Because I believe that that would add even more difficulty to the playing fields by the high school.
They have been in contact. There's a drainage ditch off to the side of that.
Doesn't work very well.
Pardon?
It doesn't work very well.
No, but they're aware of it and, and that'll be part of the project that they're working on.
Okay, thank you.
Come on.
You can't remember my name.
Stacy Taylor, I'm sorry.
Stacy Taylor, 1-5566 Falk Road. So has anybody considered how the hydrology is going to change by doing this road construction?
Yep, they've been working on it for two years.
So right now, over there in Rose Township, they're having quite a bit of flooding problems. And I know there's a lot of people in our community, in the surrounding area, that have had flooding problems the last few days, obviously because we had a little bit of rain. But I'm not really always confident in how much effort is actually forethought on this kind of a change and just asking if somebody's paying attention to that.
Two parts answer for you. You will be able to come to that open house and ask those questions. I know the drainage issue has been looked at. We're, I've also been having meetings with Water Resource Commission on the drainage in that whole area and we'll be bringing some facts back to this board as we move forward on that drain.
So I, that's awesome because I will probably try and attend that. I hope the road commission's there, but I know Mark Cornwall and I've had conversations.
The road commission is holding this open house.
Good. Look forward to visiting with them. But I know Mark Cornwall, who lives right there by Mitchell Road, has some concerns with the flooding that's happening, not only the changes in hydrology with the VA Cemetery. We know what's happening over on Falk Road and if we're changing here too, I'm just suggesting that it'd be really awesome if we could get somebody to take a big look at all of the things that are happening in our little community because it may affect somebody's river over there or somebody's lake level over there or whether or not this next road is going to flood because we didn't pay attention to what that is going to do to that. So just asking if, it, we're looking long-term. I mean, we're looking at doing some big project at the homestead, which is great, but we've got to make sure that all of this is being evaluated as a whole because otherwise we may end up with long-term consequences.
We have a list and I have a list, I should say. I have a list of areas of concern that take us all the way from the northern and the western part of the township down and across and through because we've got several areas that are a problem.
Well, I hope we get it right.
Well, that, that would be our direction, I would hope. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, we will move on to old business. This is the North Holly Road paving. The road commission was here at our last meeting and explained why we were at the place we were at. So in front of this board tonight, I did create a paper. These are not, this is not the answer. This is kind of a guide for us to decide what we want to do, understand that we have the option to say we don't want to participate at all or we have an op, option to participate. Go ahead and pass these. As you know, that they had applied for this grant back in 2017 and by their own admission, they had failed to come to our meeting and inform us of the 10% participation that was expected on this project. They sent us a letter, I think it was May of this, or not May of this year, May of 2019. They were looking for $375,000, which was our 10% on the North Holly Road project. And they were also looking for $300,000, which is a 50% participation on the Kurtz Road Bridge. They were here at that last meeting and explained to us that process. I met with Treasurer Freeman and we looked at some options and some ways that we could do this if we decide we want to participate in one or both of these in going forward. In front of you, you have the North Holly Road. Obviously, one of the ways is to make the payment in full of $375,000. Another option would be $1,000 down.
Hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand dollars down with 10 payments over 10 years of $27,500. Or the third option that I wrote down would be a 10-year installment plan of $37,500 from the general fund. You'll notice down on the bottom there that we, there's also the tri-party funds can be considered. However, if we tap those funds, those amounts vary every year based on what we get and we have to pay a third of that. And that would make those funds then not available for any other projects in the township as we move forward. And the numbers would change over the years as we worked on the balance through that. But that's also another option that's there. One of the things that really became apparent with this particular topic was the fact that we have a five-member board and it makes it very difficult for the administration to work in an administrative capacity. I had to have this meeting with Mark and I couldn't have Karen involved in this one because of the Open Meetings Act and the quorum. And it makes it difficult. There's times where Karen and I work on a project and we can't talk to Mark during that time because we have to wait for the open meeting. So while Mark and I put this together as examples or a possibility and we can have that conversation tonight, I know it's the first time you've seen it and obviously for Mr. Ruth and Mr. Feeny as well. But they are looking for, there's supposed to be a 10% participation from the township on the Tiger Grant and the North Holly Road project. And then there's supposed to be a 50% participation on the Kurtz Road Bridge option. And you'll remember when they were here, they said that if it gets to a point, if we don't participate, it gets to a point, they'll just close the road there. And that's another option as well. Unfortunately, I think the Kurtz Road was in front of the council, the township board 10 years ago, 12 years ago?
Probably longer than that.
Was that before you were here, Mark?
I believe so.
So it was before Mark was here. And back then, the buy-in would have been 75,000, but we didn't have the funds.
Probably about 2,002.
2,002. So they, they've been looking at Kurtz Road for a while. They've lowered the weight limits to the point where I think they were telling us the next one will just be to close the road, but they didn't give us any timeframe on that. So those are the options. The question now is what's the board's desire?
If you have, you know, one comment, real concern is that we don't collect the kind of money with our taxes to be doing large road projects. So if we're going to do this, I would suggest we use our tri-party funds. I suggest that we ask the people if they want to pay for, for future road improvements. We're getting to a point now where, you know, we're having to, these are large. We've saved for the last, well, at least 20 years that I know of, you know, to, to move forward with other projects, a new township hall and, and we're taking out large sums of money, which are changing everything for, in the future.
Right. And that's one of the conversations Treasurer Freeman and I had was to put on the ballot an initiative for a millage for road improvements. If we were to target specific sections that we wanted to do or, or projects, there's been conversation about paving Quick Road.
Township-wide, yeah.
Uh, paving, paving Quick Road, especially between North Holly Road and Fish Lake Road with the new subdivisions that are coming up there and all those people that are now adding traffic to that area.
Yeah, with the lowest millage in Oakland County, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Well, and we haven't, we've had the option over the past few years to raise the millage a quarter percent. We've never done it because we've been fine up until now, but that is one of the conversations. One of the things that Mark and I talked about was with option three over the 10 years, it's not as big as a hit on the initial thing.
Yeah, that would be workable.
And it can be built into the budget.
It's best for our cash flow. Right.
It is.
And, and North Holly Road, you know, it's unfortunate and they were here and explained it, but North Holly Road, had they come to us in 2017 and said, we're going to apply for this grant, this is what's involved, this is what it entails, and, and there would be a 10% buy, we could have been working in the budget, we could have made the decision at that time if we wanted to do it or not. And they came out and apologized and said that they got it backwards. So, but I, we put it on the agenda tonight to look at it. Here's your option. It's.
Now, we're, we're clear that they would accept like number three. I mean, that's.
Yes.
I mean, that was my impression that whenever we came up with they were going to go was like that.
They acknowledged that they failed to inform us in advance.
So we're looking out on this.
Because of that, they're willing to work with us.
Right.
But let's all understand, that's just on this one.
Right, right, right.
And my biggest concern is going forward.
Right.
Because we're only going to incur more and more expenses for roads, improvements or paving or whatever's required.
That's where I'd like to hold that option back about going to the people first, you know?
You know, because I've been on the board, I'm on my 12th year. We've never brought a millage increase proposal to the public in that time. In this particular case now, we have, if we move forward on, as an example, North Holly Road, we would be saying, okay, taxpayers, this cost us $375,000. It's a lot of money for a township like Holly that, as Karen said, we have one mill for township, for Holly Township, and that's been one mill since 1965.
It's more than we collect for a year, the 375 on our millage.
Right. And, and as Karen also pointed out, it's been many, many years of strict conservative financial planning that has gotten us to the point where we fortunately have these funds to do this. Because I, I don't think you'll find anyone that says, no, never mind, don't do North Holly Road.
Right, right.
So from that vantage point, it, it looks like, yes, we have to do it. But doing so, we all need to keep in mind that going forward, we're going to have to probably recommend to the public to have a millage increase that's earmarked strictly for road improvements.
Right.
That those funds cannot be used for anything else.
And to, to give you an idea, just to add to what Mark said, take Quick Road, for example, from North Holly Road over to Fish Lake Road, it's a mile long. The cost of that is about a $3 million project. Now, that's a project that you can get some grant monies for in the buy-ins, but the buy-ins are going to be 50%, which is a million and a half. Now, if you start saving your money toward that, then when it comes time to pull the trigger on the project, you have the monies there. At the same time, understand that, let's just say that, and, and understand this is a what-if, but let's just say that tonight, we were going to make the decision that we're going to pave Quick Road. We can't even get on the agenda with the road commission until 2026, which is six years away. Because that's how far out they are with their projects. And then, as they told me, you get to 2026 and you might even get bumped to 2027.
Right.
So people need to understand that as we go forward, but if we start building up the road fund, when we get to those projects, then we're in a better position as opposed to having a surprise like this one that didn't show. I mean, we were for two years, we were working on this project when the letter came through.
Yeah.
So.
Well, we, we would not be able to commit to any projects.
Right.
Paying out of their general fund.
Right. But that's what I'm saying. So we need to understand if that goes through, it's a long-term process that gets you there.
Well, I recommend that we go with three on both of those with the low payment and with the idea that we start the process of putting a proposal before the public about future and maybe coming up with a plan to show the public or where we words, you know, ideas.
And that's what this will do now.
Right.
Now we can say, okay, we did do North Holly Road and we paid $375,000 and it came out of the general fund.
We can't keep doing that.
You know, your tax dollars that we've been saving up for 20 years to build a new township hall or whatever, capital project that we may want to do. And so now we're going to deplete that fund by $375,000.
Right.
Because we, we all understand how desperately North Holly Road needs to be repaved and, and all the additional work is being done on it.
I do want to clear one thing because it made it so, this money wouldn't be coming from the building fund?
No.
No.
No, but we wouldn't have extra money to put into building.
No, this is a general fund.
I know, but you just said money like the building fund and then you said this money would be coming out of that fund and I want to clarify, not out of the capital improvement fund.
We, we were saving with the intent of possibly building a new township hall.
But we have to redirect money.
This could be contributed towards that. Now it won't be. It's going into North Holly Road.
Now, question on this, what kind of mechanisms are put in, because it is 10 years and, you know, we might, all of us might not be on there, is when we commit to this, will be a contract basically that says this is our 10-year commitment to it. So it's not a yearly thing like they're hoping to see the money from us. They know they're expecting the money from us.
The road commission would create that.
Okay.
Cost participation agreement.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that would have to be approved by the board.
Right.
Yes.
This is just basically getting the board to decide how we want, if we want to proceed and how we want to proceed.
I think the matter of proceeding is not even a question anymore. I think it's a matter we need to, so.
It's, it is an option, but.
Yeah, not a very good option.
No.
I, I'm not so sure about Kurtz Road, but. Well, I recall that he said that if you didn't participate, it'd be bad feelings, but there's no financial penalty.
No, but going forward, we all know how the world works.
Right.
And the road commission would frown on us not participating?
Well, I, Kurtz Road, yeah, the option to close is not a good one, so, but on North, I'm just pointing out.
Yeah. Yes, actually Kurtz Road being closed, not ideal, but impacts a very small number of people.
Right. And it's.
Only the people who actually, there are other ways to circumvent that bridge.
And it's really a culvert and they replaced the one in Rose Township with no cost to that township.
To township.
So I, I would challenge them considerably.
My understanding is that one came through a grant.
Then I think we should look for grants for Kurtz Road.
Well, and understand, these are two separate projects.
Right. They were voted on separately.
Yeah.
Right.
They're on the agenda as two separate.
It's lasted this many years. It's been, yeah, 18 years since they've been asking.
Right. No, I understand. But that's why I laid it out this way, just so we had kind of an idea, a concept where we go.
I like number three as well, North Holly.
That's a heck of a deal.
All right.
Right, and no interest.
Right.
Right, yeah.
And no penalty, yeah.
Right.
In the end, we're getting a cheap compared to.
Again, strictly from a cash flow standpoint, obviously, that has the minimum impact on our cash flow.
So then if I'm hearing what the board is saying, I would make a motion that we approve number three, the 10-year installments of $37,500 and we will ask the county for, Karen, give me that title for the contract.
Cost participation agreement.
We will ask them for a cost participation agreement.
On North Holly?
For both or just for North Holly?
We're just on North Holly Road.
Okay.
Is there support? Motion by Supervisor Cullis, support by Clerk Winchester. Roll call, please. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Steve Ruth?
Yes.
Mark Freeman?
Yes.
Patrick Feeny?
Yes.
Karen Winchester?
Yes.
George Cullis?
Yes. Motion carries 5-0. Okay. Next item on old business is the Kurtz Road Bridge. What is the board's desire for that?
I would like to table that and begin to search for grants to help fund that.
Okay.
I really, I'm really, I mean, because we just are now committing 375,000.
Right.
If we weren't doing that, we probably could take a little harder look at the Kurtz Road Bridge.
Okay.
But seeing how we're doing that, I would prefer, even if they close it and it's closed for a year.
Do you want to make your motion to table that while we investigate?
Yeah, motion to table Kurtz Road Bridge and investigate the possibility of grants for that project.
Support.
So motion by Treasurer Freeman, support by Trustee Feeny to table Kurtz Road Bridge while we investigate some grant opportunities. Any further discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We will go into new business, Holly Township Park Commissioner. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We will go into new business, Holly Township Park Commissioner Appointment. Start at the back? Go ahead and read it if you've got it in front of you. You don't want to read it?
No.
Okay, I got, I found it. Okay. This is Mr. Cullis and the Holly Township Board. Harold Peterson resigned as of January 1st due to moving out of Holly. At the last night's Park Commission meeting, Donna Marie McBride was unanimously selected as the person we would like to replace Harold Peterson with. Uh, McBride has spent the last several years volunteering in the parks. She is very involved in the community and has shown an interest in improving the parks. The Park Commission would appreciate your appointing her to the Park Commission. Is there any discussion?
Is she here tonight?
Is Donna here? Oh, Donna's here tonight. I would make a motion to approve.
Support.
Motion by Supervisor Cullis, support by Clerk Winchester, to approve. Roll call, please.
Karen Winchester?
Yes.
Mark Freeman?
Yes.
Steve Ruth?
Yes.
Pat Feeney?
Yes.
George Cullis?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. Donna, welcome to the Parks Board. And I'll thank you ahead of time for your service. Yeah, and I lost my agenda. Okay. We will move on to Regional Transportation Authority Millage Opposition. That is Proposed Resolution 2020-01. I will tell all of the residents of Holly Township, regardless of what party you are a part of, everybody needs to pay attention to this RTA. This is, Brooks Patterson talked about it and fought it, fought it because he wanted an opt-out option. This is nothing more than a tax grab, and they're, the top 10, 23 township supervisors in Oakland County sign, um, a resolution through the Oakland County Association of Township Supervisors opposing the RTA as it is written. There's House Bill 5229 that they're looking at right now in the state legislature. They want to create this Regional Transportation Authority, and they are going to be taxing, the way this bill is written, they could assess between 1.5 mils all the way up to five mils. Remember, we just said that Holly Township currently pays one mil? This would anywhere from one and a half to five times multiply your tax base. And I am here to tell you, as we go into this election and you look at who you're going to elect for the, even for the Oakland County Executive, the current executive, David Coulter, is in favor of this. He thinks it's a great thing. He was at our meeting. We gave him our opinions, the township supervisor, we gave him our opinions of how this was nothing more than a tax grab. Just so you understand, this taxing authority will cover the entire county. None of the transit programs that are there will come north of M-59. The closest one to us would either be in Novi or the city of Pontiac. It would be basically between Detroit and Ann Arbor and that area down there. And yet, they're going to tax and collect from the entire northern part of the county, which will receive no benefits from this at all.
And then, isn't the tax, there's a return to the county, not to the municipalities?
Right. Yeah, so, so we won't see, and people need to be very aware of that. I think we'll be holding a couple of public hearings going forward as we watch this going on to help educate people on what this is.
It has a significant negative impact on the, on the townships that don't receive any service.
Well, yeah, it's a taxation with no service. There's no limit on how much they can, uh, tax on that. Up to five mils, which would multiply your tax times five on what you pay for your home. And I think the indirect result could be even an effect on property values because nobody's going to want to move into an area that has a tax burden like that. Um, so we've been fighting it vehemently. Uh, this resolution is to send to the, to the Senate, to send to our state rep and to send to, um, our senator to get them to vote no against this. Um, it's Resolution 2020-01. It's our first resolution of the year. And I will make a motion to approve the resolution. Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Supervisor Cullis, support by Clerk Winchester. Any further discussion? None appearing. Roll call, please.
Steve Ruth?
Yes.
Mark Freeman?
Yes.
George Cullis?
Yes.
Karen Winchester?
Yes.
Pat Feeney?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. State bank authorization. I will turn that over to Treasurer Freeman.
Yes, this would be, uh, changing our account to what is called a ICS or an insured cash sweep. Uh, just a brief overview, it ensures our funding up to $14 million. And it also earns interest, uh, currently at 1.9%, which is similar to our investments in CDs. Uh, what I was able to find out was that, that $250,000 FDIC insurance on accounts is for the entire account, not each fund. So we are, we have an exposure, uh, in the event that, worst-case scenario, the state bank failed. So this account would sweep funds from the general fund and the trust and agency which serves as our escrow funding or, uh, it's an account for just holding funds. We sweep them to this ICS where we don't have to worry about the, um, $250,000 ceiling on insurance on our funds. Uh, so that is what this is in a nutshell, without me going into any deeper details unless you have some other questions.
Any further discussion?
I thought, the paperwork I have is just, I thought adding names to who's approved to-
Whenever you change your account in any way, they want us to sign a new business signature.
Got, got you.
So that's why that was-
No, because, no, because this will go in the book as the resolution.
Okay.
I've moved to approve the state bank authorization, proposed resolution 2020-02.
Support. So we have a motion by Clerk Winchester, support by Treasurer Freeman, to approve Resolution 2020-02. Roll ca- any further discussion? Roll call, please.
George Cullis?
Yes.
Karen Winchester?
Yes.
Mark Freeman?
Yes.
Steve Ruth?
Yes.
Pat Feeney?
Yes.
Okay, now we will enter into our second public comment. The rules from the first one apply here. Three minutes. Uh, name and address when you come to the microphone. Is there anybody interested in public comment? Yes, sir.
Uh, good evening. My name is Derek Burn. I just want to kind of touch on what you spoke to on the millage opposition for the Regional Transit Authority. Um, it's very crucial that residents in the township that do not want this go vote because when this was brought forward in 2016, it literally lost by .18%. So if we don't, the people that aren't getting, you know, utilization from the service, don't go out and vote this down, if it makes a proposal and there's no opt-out options, then that, that could be whether it passes or fails uh, by a large, you know, a very narrow margin. But basically, as you stated, all, all it's doing for us is subsidizing everybody else who's going to be using it, which, you know, I love my neighbor, but I'm not going to give him $500 in gas for his vehicle to do anything. That's kind of what, what we're doing with this is, you know, we're paying that money so other people can utilize the service. So that's all I had on that, and I appreciate you listening.
Well, are the num- are there numbers of voters enough to even?
Well, like he said, it failed by 1.8%.
Yeah, .18.
People need to understand.
.18.
.18, yeah. But what people need to understand is, just as an example, we have a little over 11,000 people in Holly Township. Waterford Township has 70,000 people. When you get down to Ferndale and Royal Oak, the numbers, it's, and, and I can guarantee you, if this passes, it will probably end up in court because it's, it's taxation without representation. And they'll argue that we got to vote, but we don't have the numbers anywhere close to this.
If any rural township to add up to what they have is very difficult.
No, you go across the top of the township.
Mr. Burton, can you give me your address, please?
Yes, it's 14016 Fish Lake Road.
Thank you.
So, so it's, it is a very big issue. People need to understand that. And depending on who's at the top of the county, it'll also be a question of whether they're going to defend it or not. Brooks Patterson defended this for years and, and it was-
Now we don't have that.
And now, once Brooks passed, they appointed David Coulter, and he has come out and talked about what a wonderful thing he, what a wonderful thing he thinks it is. And at that Township Supervisors Meeting, we all talked, and it fell on deaf ears.
And it's not a free service, so there'll be taxation as well as a cost attributed to each-
You know, in one of the conversations they had when they made a presentation to us, part of their presentation, they stated that, um, we spend less on mass transit in southeast Michigan than any other community across the country.
Because there isn't.
And they talked about Chicago and Cleveland.
Yeah.
And they talked about LA and New York. And I, and I asked him, I said, well, let me ask you this. I said, you do know you're in the Motor City. I said, the bigger question is, is what studies have you done on the need? And he said, well, the need will come once we provide it. Which is probably the most backward statement I'd ever heard anybody make.
I had a conversation with Mr. Culler, and I said, I'm from, originally from down in the same neck of the woods as him, and I explained to him that I lived at 10 Mile in, uh, 696, and the bus service to get me to 14 Mile and John R. was so inadequate, I was in darn good shape because I could walk from one bus to the next. And Mr. Culler, just south of his own city, is what the locals call malfunction center, and that's the transit center at the state fairgrounds. Uh, if you ever want to see where Uber drivers could probably now make a good for, or a good, uh, job out there because the buses do not operate properly. Uh, it's not an exaggeration to go, John R. is considered one of their busiest lines. It's not uncommon to see buses go by, nobody on the bus, or hardly anybody on the bus. And it's, you know, what I said to him was, if you could get the system that you have to work, I said, that would be my first thing before you go out looking for more money to add more things to. And, you know, it's like, well, you have, he, the same kind of thing. It's like, well, we got to build it because people won't use it unless it's better. Well, you know, it's, or unless you get, unless we have the bells and whistles. Um, I don't know if anybody's familiar with the train on Woodward Avenue. It's a toy. I mean, it really doesn't go with, yeah, it doesn't really, it's that and the people mover.
It sits there, and if you watch it going up and down, it's empty.
It's empty.
They built, they built the people mover in downtown Detroit, and it's been losing money for years.
And, you know, the thing is on it is that it, it's something that looks great, but in reality, we have yet to figure out how to run what we already have properly. So I really don't want, I don't think seeing any more money going to anything like that, so.
All right. Well, this is public comment. Let me get back to the public. There's, there's, well, there's a lot of passion here because this is a big deal.
Yeah.
Um, but let me turn to the public. Anyone else for public comment?
Mary Blanchard, 3444 Old Creek Drive, Holly, Michigan. I know that, uh, for those of you who attend, uh, the board meetings, uh, Stacy Taylor and myself have brought up many times the, uh, issue that we're having, uh, between the abandoned landfill on Falk Road, the Holly Hills Manufactured Home Community, which is up for, um, expansion to double the amount, uh, including, uh, their testing, um, at the landfill that has not been completed, uh, confirmed by DEQ Eagle Village of Holly and EPA for 25 years. We have not had any testing. Uh, the aquifer needs to be examined, uh, to make sure that there is not a cone of depression, uh, which would affect the, uh, water testing, or I'm sorry, the water supply for the, uh, manufactured home community as well as up to 100,000 people. I would suggest that anyone, uh, please contact your representatives. I have a sheet here. If you would like to take it and ask them that they get involved and that they, um, try to get this forward because in March, uh, it is likely that the Holly Hills Manufactured Home Community will be coming forward uh, on that expansion. And if it goes through, um, there's, there's nothing really in those files that I can see, uh, and have been explained to me that would, uh, impact, um, them not getting it uh, because there's no negative, uh, testing in there at this point. Um, so we would appreciate if anybody would be able to do that. If you'd like a copy of this, I could give it to you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Yes, sir.
Uh, well, good evening. Uh, my name is Paul Young, and I'm from Brighton, Michigan. Uh, that's in Livingston County, and so that may cause some of you to wonder why is someone from Livingston County here to address us? Uh, well, what Holly and all of North Oakland County have in common with both Livingston County and Ingham County is they are all in the 8th Congressional District. So I wanted to share with this board, with, with those in attendance tonight and those watching or listening on the live stream. Again, my name is Paul Young, and I am a Republican candidate, uh, running for the 8th District Congressional Seat. Uh, as many of you in this room and listening may know, that's a seat currently held by Alyssa Slotkin, who, while she campaigned and told us that she would not advance impeachment, who campaigned and told us that she would work in a bipartisan way. Uh, I think many people, as I have been up and down and across, uh, the Oakland County part of this district, throughout Livingston County and Ingham County, what I've heard from hundreds, if not thousands, and tens of thousands of voters, well, perhaps I haven't yet talked to tens of thousands, is she has just not lived up to the promises she made. And so, uh, that's what I'm hearing from voters, and so as I declare my candidacy, I declared it about two months ago, I'm getting to townships and cities and communities throughout the district, asking people for their support. Just a little bit about me, I want to make sure I observe the three-minute, uh, limit here. Uh, again, my name is Paul Young, but I spell my name a little bit differently. I spell it J-U-N-G-E. In fact, when I was a kid, my buddies used to call me Jungie. Uh, but, but again, it's Paul Young. I was born here in Michigan, uh, born in Ann Arbor. Uh, I lived in Livonia in Farmington Hills as a kid. Uh, my dad, eventually the family moved on as he built his business. I've worked in that family business. I'm also an attorney. I was a, a county prosecutor for a while. Uh, most recently, I was living actually in Washington DC, where I worked as an investigative counsel with the Senate Judiciary Committee. Uh, Senator Chuck Grassley was my boss, working in the Senate Judiciary Committee. Uh, and then I worked for a while in the Trump administration. I worked at the U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Services. That's part of the, uh, Department of Homeland Security. So, uh, I could go on about what I would like to prioritize if, if you should, uh, send me to Washington DC as your representative in Congress. But again, I want to repres- uh, I want to respect that three-minute limit. I do have some campaign materials. I do have some materials, petitions to get my name on the ballot, and, uh, I'll be staying after the meeting. So thank you very much for this opportunity to address this group, and I ask for your support, and, uh, if, uh, if you think you're not happy with the representation you're getting right now from this district, let's make a change. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Stacy, you were already up, I think. Oh, the first one, okay.
Stacy Taylor, 15566 Falk Road. Paul, I would look forward to meeting you, but I'll tell you, Alyssa Slotkin's the only person I believe in right now. And I've been fighting this for two and a half years. So, the dump is a really big problem. That's what my focus is on right now. So we all know what Holly Hills is going to be. We do know that the change in hydrology, when they level that forest, is going to be significant. That, that water goes across my land. I think I posted a video on Facebook a couple days ago. It's going to double, triple, and, and more, and that's all from the, the dump report. I now have the dump report on a digital format. Thank you, Mary Blanchard and Freedom of Information Act. Anybody that wants that, please give me your email. I will get that to you. It is not so easy to do. Okay, I did the PFAS thing in Ann Arbor yesterday. Way awesome. Eagle- Eagle, I have so much disappointment in them right now, I spent a half an hour talking to the water protection guy at that table. And all they could tell me is go to that table and go to that table, and we don't talk to each other, but you have to each, okay, come on, man. I mean, we're a lot further and we're twenty twenty, we need to get this right. All right, so, uh, this is Oakland County, nineteen seventy, so, this is the supplemental to the dump report. That needs to be read by all, I've given you guys part of that. But this is nineteen seventy, since the meet, okay, this is from the Oakland County Department of Health to Fred Disbrow, he was the Holly Village Superintendent at that point. Since the meeting of April twenty-eighth nineteen seventy, with representatives from the Village of Holly called for the purpose of discussing the Falk Road disposal site, no official word has been forthcoming concerning compliance with Act eighty-seven Public Acts of nineteen sixty-five. The manner in which this waste disposable area operated in the past has constituted many violations of this law. These have been the subjects of several warnings, reports, et cetera, from this office to the local officials. Furthermore, there have been discussions with the late Mister Lester Village President and Mister Tinsman, Township Supervisor and Mister McKenney, the Village Township Attorney concerning non-compliance with the statute. The disposal site is still continuing to operate without a license as required by this law. The site is still contar, uh, still the source of air pollution during periods of trash burning. The site is still contributing to land and water pollution and is perp, bleh, perpa, I can't say it, perpa. Yep, a rodent harborage during each day of its existence. While there are some who sincerely feel that the village is Holly is a clean place, it must be remembered that any cleanliness which generates air, water and ground pollution problems is not truly cleanliness. Particularly those who may be adversely affected by the pollution, pollutants. This department cannot further delay any necessary, any delay taking necessary corrective action. Therefore, it is hereby ordered that you are so informed that the following concerns of actions need to be taken. Okay, I know you're going to cut me to three minutes, I will hand these out in a second so I don't get distracted. Um, this is the dump, here's we got the health concerns. So, this is a whole site that Pete, somebody, Wendy Davis, Kelly Belcher and Mike. Everything I told to the people yesterday at this meeting, most of everything that they're doing is autoimmune issues. This is me. This is what happened to me. That was two and a half years after I moved into my house. I did infectious disease doctor, I was under the care, I did a hospital for six days. I went to the University of Michigan and the basic thing they said is, and not only is this incredibly rare, they can't explain it, there's a contributing factor that they do not understand what it is. This is all the people that are commenting on Holly health concerns and this is their issues. Some of these people are, only have a fifteen-year life expectancy because of this. I've had people comment to me that the lead is the big problem, especially down by the South Pond. So, somebody else said to me, because I've got a lot of people in my ear, which is great, and I'm having to, there used to be a battery factory in Holly. Okay, so, here's the deal, we had these two train tracks back in the day, we were one of the first places in Michigan to have these two trains. That's why we had the piano factory. Varnished, that is probably one of the problems in the dump, okay, we know there's fifty-five gallon drums. We know that lead is a concern, so I started looking up the battery factory, I understand. Do you know how much ba, lead is in a car battery? Eighteen pounds. Each battery. There is two pounds of acid, I think, it might be one pound, I can't remember right this very second, both of them are major health concerns. This is Denise, my poor friend Denise, this is her dog Buddy, right? Beautiful pup. He was a frogger, he laid, he used to spend all of his time in that pond. All of a sudden, one day, he couldn't walk, I mean, literally, it was very much like a couple of day kind of thing. We took him to the vet in Milford, they thought they could solve it, within two days, they had to put him down. Two days ago, I had a conversation with my next-door neighbor, her son-in-law behind, Marion Harry, who's been here many times, had to shoot a fox. And I said, why would they do that? Because we just had a fox cross our property yesterday. Because he couldn't stand up. That's the same thing that happened to Buddy. You guys, that lake is probably polluted. We have had no testing in twenty-five years. Back in the day, a dump was a dump, you took it to the dump, you thought you were doing the right thing. So, I'm not putting this on anybody, I'm just saying that's what it was back in the day. We're moving forward, I understand, I will leave, I will sit back down, but this is her new puppy. She goes, how do I let him get into that lake? He wants to drink that water. What do we do, guys? How do I rinse my vegetables? How do I stick my hands in soapy water and wash dishes? This is real. These are the medicines, this is the twenty thousand dollars spent on my fight for my face and they still have no answer. I cannot have children, which, haha, it's too late for that anyways, I can't give blood. It's very real, guys, we need to take care of that dump situation, there's going to be thousands of people living across the street if they level that forest and put more people into Holly Hills.
All right, thank you. Any, any, anyone else for public comment? Mister Kinnaman?
Richard Kinnaman, four one five one Stonebridge. Uh, speaking on behalf of the Holly Area Chamber of Commerce, uh, we have our annual dinner coming up, uh, week from Saturday. Uh, everyone here, uh, has been invited, public is invited, tickets are forty-five dollars, uh, to attend a wonderful evening at the Holly Hotel, uh, where we celebrate the individuals who have, uh, been awarded, uh, honors through the chamber for two thousand nineteen, as well as, uh, our update on where we've been and where we are going. Uh, we are one of the fastest-growing chambers in the state of Michigan. In two years, we have added a hundred members. Um, we're going someplace. Um, come and join us.
Dates and time again?
Saturday, the twenty-fifth. Uh, networking drinks time starts at six, dinner is served at seven, uh, followed by program. And, uh, tickets may be purchased online at, uh, our website, hollyareachamber.com. Uh, or you may purchase them directly from me in the office.
Okay, anyone else for public comment? We will adjourn this meeting at eight oh seven.